So it says we are live on YouTube.
Did we lose Bill? We lost Bill.
I mean, look, let me look, he's.
Hello.
Hi Claus, we are live on YouTube.
Are we live on YouTube? Where's Bill?
We lost him. We just lost him as soon as we went live.
Have we ever, have we ever had a meeting that would just, everything went perfect with this stuff? There we go, Andrew, Ian. Hey, did everybody like that snowstorm on Monday?
Oh, yeah.
But didn't stay.
Oh. In the middle of the afternoon, I was still doing a few driveways, but I was just pushing water. Just pushing water.
I'm just gonna give Phil a call, give me, just.
Sure thing.
Phil's just connecting to audio.
Okay.
There.
Hello?
Hi, Phil.
Uh, something happened, I just completely went off. I'm still trying to get everybody on the screen. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
There you are.
Okay, sorry, everybody.
See you.
I just went off the screen there when we got to start, so uh, I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting. And this is our regular meeting of council, live streamed electronically, uh, December the 7th. So, uh, welcome to our guests, our public, our staff and all of council. So, uh, I now call the meeting o- uh, open. And, um, we, uh, I don't think we have any, uh, items to move forward tonight. So I'm going to go to the first motion, it was moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Ian Straight, that the regular meeting of council agenda dated December the 7th, 2021 be approved as circulated. All in favor? Okay, thank you, that's carried. I will also remind, uh, all of council that if you have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. Uh, moving on, uh, we, um, I'd like to ask everyone, uh, to, uh, please, uh, have a moment of silence and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll just, uh, everybody can, uh, will be just a half a minute here, so please, uh, for a moment of silence, everyone, thanks. Thanks, everyone. I now have a motion, it was moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus van der Meer, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of November the 16th, 2021, be approved as circulated. All in favor? Uh, I'm, uh, not seeing everybody's hands, all in favor? Um. Okay, so these, these, these minutes are carried then. I'm going to go to any business arising from those minutes, please, anyone? Okay, seeing none then, uh, we're going to move on. And, um, we're going to go straight into our first delegation. And I believe we have Harold Kegway, uh, from the Keystone Bridge Management Corporation. And, um, Harold, uh, thanks for coming and doing this delegation. And now this is going to be on the Richardson Road culvert. So, um, and I know we also have, uh, I believe we have Steven on with us also, if we have any questions. So, uh, we generally try to keep our delegations to 10 minutes if possible, so, uh, Harold, I'm gonna hand this over to you and thanks for coming.
Uh, thank you very much, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, I'm gonna have to share my screen.
Yeah, there you are, fine. There you are.
Okay, I'll need to have the host allow a screen sharing.
Yep. Just be a sec, Harold.
Okay, very well.
You should be allowed to screen share now.
Okay.
Yes, it's on now, Harold.
Excellent, okay, I'll try to watch the clock here, get through this in 10 minutes. Uh, so we designed the replacement for the culvert and this is just a quick overview, uh, to give you a little bit of confidence in the design and the design approach. Uh, so this culvert was added to the Olson listed structures in 2018, when Keystone was involved in the inspection, uh, back when Steve Keely was your, uh, Public Works Director. Uh, Steve was a classmate of mine by the way back in high school. Uh, the culverts are about 30 years old at this time. Uh, they are not a very good design in terms of passing water. And one of the chief problems is, is that, uh, they are prone to obstructing because of their small diameter and the width of the stream. And, uh, the road platform over the culverts is on the narrowest side. The drainage basin that, uh, is drained by these four culverts is shown in this slide here. It's almost 40 square kilometers in size. About 41% of the drainage basin is swamps and ponds. 29% is agriculture and about a quarter is forest. Uh, this culvert is designed for a co- a, a flow, uh, that can be expected about once every 10 years. This is known as the Q10, so the one in 10 year flood. And that amounts to 11 cubic meters per second. Uh, there's a check flood that is designed for as well, which is 100 year return period. And that's estimated to be 18 cubic meters per second. And as I noted, uh, the existing culvert, the openings are constricted. Uh, there is some scour downstream, uh, which means the water is flowing very quickly through the pipes. And it's eroding the stream bed downstream. And we found from our hydro technical analysis that in an extreme event, there's a good possibility that the road could overflow and you could lose the culverts. This is, uh, from some computer software we use to model, uh, the impact of, in this case, the check flood, the extreme flood. And what we found in the modeling is that, uh, the water could be backed up by over a meter high, uh, between the upstream and downstream side of the road. Uh, with that, there's a risk of the embankment, uh, uh, piping failure in the embankment, which is just like a quicksand type failure. And also the water level upstream is to the point that is almost over top in the road. And depending on how, how well the stream is modeled, how accurately we gauge the actual flows, uh, the road could well overtop in a 100 year flood. Uh, we looked at, uh, two options for replacement. We looked at a corrugated steel pipe arch type culvert, which would have a span of 2.6 meters and a height of 1.8 meters. And we also looked at twin, uh, 2.4 by one and a half concrete box culverts. Uh, you know, for, for, um, for some of you, maybe feet are better, so an eight foot, uh, span by five foot, uh, height, uh, concrete box culvert, uh, is what we looked at. I certainly like feet, uh, a lot, uh, still. Uh, so when we modeled how the pipe arch culvert would operate compared to the concrete box culvert, we learned that the pipe arch culvert was not really any kind of an improvement over what's there presently. It would have to be a much larger pipe arch culvert to be an improvement. And that would mean raising the height of the road. And, uh, it would add to the expense and, and to, slightly to the complexity of the project. A concrete box culvert because of, it's just a better opening size and a smoother opening, um, it performs a whole lot better. And so what we learned was, uh, with a, if we were to put in a concrete box culvert, uh, the water levels under the design flood, the 10 year return period flood, would be about, uh, 14 centimeters or six inches lower compared to what's existing. And under the extreme flood, uh, water levels would be over a foot lower. And so the concrete box culvert is, uh, clearly an improvement over what's existing and is a better choice compared to a pipe arch culvert. I don't really speak to it, but a, a corrugated steel pipe arch culvert will last about 35 to 40 years. Whereas a concrete box culvert should last, uh, easily up to 100 years. Alright, so here we are comparing, um, it's not quite an apples to apples comparison, but it shows how the concrete box culvert would operate under a, uh, uh, the design storm of about 11 cubic meters per second. And, uh, that's compared to the existing under the extreme flood. In any case, uh, what's important to observe is that under the design flood, there's about a foot of clearance from the water level to the underside of the culvert. And, uh, that's, that's desirable for design purposes. And it could point out that the, uh, the water level under the extreme flood would be about a foot below the, uh, top of the road, or foot below the top of Richardson Road. Uh, we did a survey in the field and this is just, uh, a quick glimpse of, uh, a 3D model of what the, uh, our survey looks like. And it shows the extent of the survey. Uh, we're proposing to close the road to install the culvert. And so the detour is, uh, somewhat lengthy, uh, that takes us through Merrickville to get around, uh, the culvert site. Fortunately, as you probably know, there's not a lot of traffic on Richardson Road. And so the public won't be inconvenienced, uh, very much. Uh, the design looks like this in plan and, uh, sort of in cross section. Uh, we're showing, uh, in cross section that, um, six pieces, uh, two and a half meters long, uh, times, uh, two barrels, uh, will, uh, will be quite sufficient and will result in an improved road cross section. And, uh, to shorten up the culvert, we're proposing to use some, uh, uh, concrete gravity blocks. Uh, so, uh, so instead of making the culvert longer, we just use these concrete gravity blocks to shorten up the culvert, keep everything nicely within the right of way. And, uh, these co- uh, concrete gravity blocks actually improve the flow through the culvert. And so that's an important consideration in the hydraulic design. Now, we're showing a little bit of riprap around the inlet, the outlet of the culvert. And we're also showing guide rail and, uh, the guide rail, we'll, we'll talk to it in a little bit, uh, more detail in a minute. Uh, it's a fairly expensive contribution to the overall cost. And we're showing it as provisional, uh, so that if we find that the project is, uh, a little bit over budget or we're trying to save some money for the township, uh, then we could potentially consider not installing the guide rail at this time. A couple of more views, an end view of the culvert, uh, showing the riprap and what the end of the culvert looks like. Uh, it's showing about, uh, two feet of cover over top of the culvert, which is the minimum amount of gravel that needs to be, uh, placed over top of the culvert for the culverts to pass a, a full truckload. Uh, the new road cross section, we're showing, uh, an eight meter cross section from face a guide rail to face, uh, face a guide rail. Now, that's a very generous cross section. And, uh, that will, uh, that will serve the, the township for, for, for a good, long time at this location. Uh, so, uh, in terms of budget breakdown, the, uh, concrete culvert pieces and the gravity blocks are estimated to, it will cut, cost about 170,000. Uh, the granulars for the project around 24,000. Uh, the guide rail, 43,000, which is a very significant component of the cost. And we show that as being provisional. And then, uh, for removals of the culvert excavation and dewatering, our estimate's about 26,000. And other sundry costs about 48,000, uh, for a total budget cost of, uh, $311,000. And normally when I estimate these things, uh, I'm conservative. Uh, meaning that, uh, in actuality, the price should come in well below 300,000. But for budgeting purposes, and so there's no sticker shock afterwards. Uh, the engineering estimate at this time is 311. And again, I point out that, uh, uh, $43,000 could be taken away quite easily if an election was made not to install the guide rail at this time. I'm recommending that, uh, the township, uh, provides an incentive to the contractor. Uh, without an incentive, the project should take about 10 days to complete. Uh, with an incentive, uh, the road closure could be reduced to seven days or possibly less. And so in the contract language, I provided for a thousand dollar a day incentive, uh, to open the road early. And now, of course, uh, this can be, uh, reduced or increased depending on, uh, or eliminated altogether depending on how council, uh, views this, uh, this particular, uh, suggestion. And, uh, this is, uh, somewhat similar culvert, uh, much like your culvert, but, uh, this just gives you an idea of approximately what the, uh, design solution we've recommended will look like. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Harold. And, uh, thanks, thank you, Harold. I'm going to open it up now, if we have any questions from council, I do see Ian and then Claus.
Yeah, thank you very much Reeve and, uh, thank you very much Harold for the, uh, for the presentation. I kind of, I kind of agree with the idea of, of the, uh, the guardrails are nice, but I don't know that 100% that they're, uh, necessary, um, given the, given the amount of traffic that's on, on Richardson Road. I'm at 100% maybe sold on that. Um, and thank you for, uh, providing the detour stuff, um, just so we know how long it, it looks like the road's gonna be out of service for. Um, I'm just wondering, do you have a roundabout idea of what the costing would be to just replace the existing that's there now with existing? And what the pipe arch cost would be?
Uh, the, uh, pipe arch would, uh, result in a saving of a approximately $30,000 to the overall project. Uh, but it would need to be a little bit bigger. And I don't have any recent up to date costs for, for pipe arch culverts. But, uh, there would definitely be a saving. And, uh, that has to be considered against the fact that it has a, uh, a lesser overall lifespan.
And what about, what about the existing, the existing design that's there right now? I know it's not, uh, maybe from the engineering world, maybe not the 100% uh, the ideal situation, but, um, uh, uh, since I've been on council anyway, I don't, I'm not aware of any time that the, uh, Richardson roads flooded over. Um, so I'm just wondering, you know, what does, what would that cost be? Would you have an idea?
Just. First off, like, I could, I could not in good conscience, uh, recommend replacing in kind. I think that's what you're suggesting, like just haul out the four pipes and put in four new pipes, uh, that are similar in diameter. I, I could not in good conscience recommend that. Uh, but, uh, if, if that election was made, uh, you would certainly need, uh, the design effort that's been put into the project thus far. And I would suggest, uh, like, possibly of the order of about a hundred thousand dollars to maybe a hundred twenty thousand dollars, uh, to do a, a replacement in kind. It would certainly be a very significant saving. And that would mean probably, uh, salvaging the, the gra- gravel materials to the greatest extent possible. And, uh, possibly, uh, you know, deepening the excavation a little bit so the culvert inverts are a little bit lower than they are presently. But, uh, I would not, I would not be comfortable offering that as a design.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Claus? Yes, thanks Reeve and Harold, thank you for the presentation, very well done. Uh, just, I have a question also on the guardrails, I could probably live without them. My question is from a safety point of view and a liability. If we don't put guardrails on, are we reliable if someone goes off there? I know it's not a heavily traveled road, but there's always that possibility. I just wanna, wouldn't wanna see us in a situation where we didn't do it. And, uh, someone had an accident and we're held responsible. My question, that's my question, if you can answer or not, or maybe Steve might have to answer that.
I, I could certainly speak to it initially. Um. Every municipality has to budget so much towards safety improvements. It's just a good idea, uh, to have so much money in the pot. And then it's a question of, in this case, $43,000 expenditure. Is Richardson Road culvert the most appropriate place, uh, to put guide rail as a, as a, as a roadside improvement, uh, compared to maybe some other place where you have an accident history and you have no guide rail? And, and, and so you have to say, okay, is it defensible to not put guide rail at Richardson Road? And it's only not defensible, or it's only defensible to not put guide rail there if there's another place that has a greater need and you spend the money there. Um, liability, like that's for the lawyers and it's a bit of a risk management exercise. I, um, good engineering practice suggests that yes, you should put in guide rail. And then the guide rail standards are such that, once you start to put in guide rail, it becomes very expensive, very quickly. Each end treatment costs about $8,000. Um, there's, uh, uh, the guide rail itself is about $200 a meter. Uh, a lot of municipalities said now, in fact, the only standard for a guide rail end costs about $4,000, or it used to be a simple fishtail that cost only 100 bucks. Uh, so, uh, our friends, uh, that set the standards aren't necessarily doing municipalities such as Montague a favor, uh, in terms of how the guide rail standards are created and how they're expected to be installed.
Okay, thank you, I do have a follow up question for you, uh, may? You indicated Harold that on the, the road base, uh, you would put two feet. Would that be two feet of solid granular or a mixture?
Uh, I, I would suggest that two feet of, uh, granular material would be appropriate, uh, just from the point of view of simplicity, but it could be like a granular B or granular B2 as well, which is like a little bowier. And then just leave the top, uh, six to, to 10 inches of, uh, granular A.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks Claus, um, I have, um, a comment Harold and then a, a question. Uh, I guess the comment is to everybody, it's been already brought up by a couple of people about guardrails. But I wo- I would remind everyone that, um, we, um, we just, uh, did a, an upgrade on Matheson Drive about two years ago, which is the busiest, um, road owned by Montague, I believe. Certainly the busiest paved road by Montague. And, uh, much, much busier than Richardson. And at the Rosedale Creek, which is probably a lot bigger creek also, we did not put any, uh, guardrails up. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that. And I have a couple of questions, Harold, um. You, uh, I'm just wondering, what do the gravity blocks, or how, you mentioned that they help the flow of the, the water. I wondered, that's one question and the other one is, um, yeah, well, I'll ask that one first.
Okay, yes, uh, with the culvert is protruding into the water course, uh, then the water does not enter the culvert as efficiently as if there's a guide wall. And in this case is, um, uh, the difference is, uh, there's a coefficient and, um, with the lower the number, the better. Uh, so with the gravity block walls, the coefficient is 0.5. With the culvert protruding into the water course is 0.9. And so that entrance coefficient is greatly improved with the gravity blocks.
Yeah, thank you, and the other question I had was, uh, one of the costs that was still fairly substantial, uh, in your presentation was the other. So, um, I, I, I always kind of like to know a little bit about, what do you actually mean by other?
Uh, I would, uh, I could, I, I, I'll dig up that information and, uh, just give me a minute and, uh, I, uh, and I will give you that breakdown.
Thanks.
Okay, so some of the other, uh, costs are the signing, the traffic control signing, uh, the environmental protection, uh, silt barriers. Um, waterproofing of the culvert, which is a, a good idea, but it is a significant, it is an expense. Uh, but we do recommend waterproofing a culvert, but it only has two feet of fill on it. Uh, so, so the traffic control signing, uh, the silt barriers and the waterproofing are the principal, uh, other, uh, parts of the work. And then the bonus, the bonus penalty, uh, would be included in that as well.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from council, uh, Jeff?
Thank you Reeve, thanks Harold for your presentation, it's, uh, it was very helpful. And, uh, a couple of courses, I, I went up at the conceptual drawing. You're showing two, uh, cement culverts there, is that, is that the same idea of what you're talking about putting in, uh, on Richardson Road?
Yes, that's what we're recommending for Richardson Road is a two concrete box culverts.
So, like, uh, like to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Straight said, where we, we really haven't seen any, uh, that I've ever heard of or, or, or got any records from, any big flood issues or any problems in the last, uh, last many, many years. It is, if, if we were to only put one in and then use those, uh, what do you call those, those, uh, things that, to kind of water in, sorry, had to guide the water in.
You know, the gravity box?
The gravity box, I, yeah, yeah, if we were to use those to, to guide it into the one culvert, is that, is that enough, um, size in order to flow the water through or, or, or is that a, a bigger problem?
Yeah, again, in, in good conscience, I could not recommend that, uh, based on, uh, the, the hydro technical modeling, uh, you're understanding what the flow should be. Um, you know, as an engineer, uh, I have to be conservative and, but I'm not normally overly conservative. I try to be very, very respectful of, uh, the budgets of, uh, you know, rural municipalities in particular. But any of my clients, I'm very, very conscientious of their budget. And I try to, uh, provide designs that I think are, uh, defensible and represent good value to the public, uh, for the long term. Um, I definitely, I could not provide my, uh, seal on the drawings to, for, take professional responsibility for the design if it was only a single barrel culvert. I, I would have to, uh, I say you're on your own.
What, and just to follow with that, is, is it just more of, out of curiosity, is it, is it what, what data supports that? I guess to say that, uh, the water flow that's, that's shown in the past or, or it could be there. I mean, I know there's always the potential, but it's, it's, I guess the, the hard data that shows that that flow actually will happen, uh, that, you know, that, that the need would be, I guess. Uh, I mean, I respect your opinion, I respect the, the conservative side of things, but I also, on the other, on the other side is, you know, we sometimes see municipalities, things that are built to a standard that will, that, that'll never be reached. And I, and I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're crossing, that we're, we're following what actually could happen and not what, you know, minor could happen.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly respect that and I value, uh, that, that thinking. Um, I, uh, when I did the hydro technical analysis, there are, uh, three models that are used, uh, and they take into account the size of the drainage basin, uh, the amount of precipitation, the slope of the stream and a number of other variables to come up with, uh, appropriate numbers. and a number of other variables to come up with appropriate numbers. And, and again, I have a wealth of experience doing this as well. And the, the design flood, the, the Q ten of, I think, eleven cubic meters per second. On the low, low side, it might only in reality be seven and a half, for example. And I could tell you more precisely if you ask me to. And I did provide a, a report to Stephen that I'm sure he'd be very happy to share with you that, that speaks in more detail in terms of how the flows were calculated. But some of the flow estimates were much greater than, than I used. And one of the estimated models is a little bit lower. I have to use some judgment and try to take, take my best shot at it. Certainly the existing pipes, you can see there's very high velocity flow through those pipes. Judged by, judging by the scour downstream. And one of the things that I'm compelled to do is to also keep something in the, in our pockets with respect to the concept of climate change. More extreme events happening more frequently. And so, so I'm, I'm quite comfortable with the, with the design flow. But again, it's based on modeling and the modeling is, it's good science, but it is, it's imperfect. And you could well have a five hundred year storm next spring. Or you might not have a five hundred year storm or some hundred year storm for another two hundred years. Nobody could say that with any certainty.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, Harold. I think, I don't see any other questions. So thanks very much. Just before we do, I have a resolution here I want to read. But I just want to make sure that there's no questions from, from either Stephen or Andrew. I don't see any questions, but I just wanted to give them an opportunity. No, so everything is fine there now then, Harold. So thanks very much for this delegation. And I know we'll be considering it and taking everything in that you presented to us. We do have a motion, it was moved by Claus Vandemere and seconded by Jeff Carroll, that the council received the delegation from Keystone Bridge Management Corporation regarding the Richardson Road Culvert for information. All in favor? That's carried. Okay, thanks, Harold.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, thank you, counsel. Thank you all.
So we're going to go on to our next delegation. And the next delegation, we've got, I believe it's Morgan Kenny. And Morgan Kenny is representing the Burchill Road Speed Reduction Request. And representing the people living in that area of Burchill Road. So it's, Morgan is with us, but I'll wait until you come on to the screen there, Morgan, please. Okay, thanks, Morgan. It would be great to have you in person, but for now, this is second best. So welcome. And I'm going to give you the screen and the floor then. And you have about ten minutes, if you don't mind, to do your delegation. And so, thanks for coming. So will you be, will you be wanting to share the screen? You're, you're mute, I think, Morgan? Yes, Morgan?
You send her a message, Kristin?
I think she's just trying to get her microphone to turn on.
Okay.
Just so that the public knows what we're waiting on, we're just waiting on Morgan to do her delegation. And we're having some technical difficulties there for a minute, so everybody, please, just be patient. It looks, Christie, maybe that Morgan is trying to phone somebody, I don't know.
I actually think she might be frozen.
She might be frozen, yeah.
Yeah, it's frozen.
Says her browser won't give her permission. I wonder, Morgan, if you have like the Zoom app on your phone, you might have to do that.
We could go on with our next report, Christie. Until then, when you guys work this out.
Yeah.
Are you able to tell Morgan that we're going to go on to the next report and then we'll have her come in right after it?
Oh, I think she's just logged in with her phone. Hold on one moment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Oh, sorry about that. I was trying to use my work computer and it's got all funky, a bunch of funky security things on it and such, so it obviously was not liking Zoom. And so, yes, I, we'll be brief. I'm here to represent the residents of Burchill Road in our request to reduce the speed. Specifically, the distance between the two S curves where Richardson Road crosses. We would be interested in, in the whole road, but I understand that much further up, it's not as densely populated. And so our primary concern is, is the more densely populated, there's many more residences in that section of Burchill. And we often find that it's used as a throughway to Roger Stevens. So we have traffic often on this road that are not resident road and don't have the same respect for the road. I've heard my neighbors that people are concerned about walking their pets, especially if they need to walk them around those S curves, they're blind curves. And there's been many cases of people speeding around those curves. Coming to the top of the hill and, and just speeding down and up the other side. There's, I've had personally many occurrences where I haven't even been able to turn into my driveway while trying to speed down that road and get past me, as they consider my speed to be not sufficient. So we would really like to see the speed reduced to fifty. Given that we likely have an upcoming closure of Richardson, which will be redirecting traffic down Burchill. Specifically in that section of street that I'm referring to, seems very timely to request a reduction in the speed there. We'd like to see it reduced to fifty. And I think that's all I have to say.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Morgan. Just to, the only comment that I would make is, we hear it more and more from our residents that the road they live on is, is a through road. So, you know, whether it be Rosedale Road or, or Cold Road or Burchill, whatever. Because the area is becoming so much more populated, not just Montague, but the other towns around Montague, we, we're, we're finding this as a, as sort of a common complaint to, of people. Pointing out that the roads are being used as, as through roads, just a comment. So I'm going to open this up. Thanks for coming to us with this request. And I'm going to open up for any questions, Morgan, okay? Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none then, we definitely will be bringing this back to council to, to discuss it. Yes.
Sorry. I think you were froze there for a moment. You hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for the presentation, Morgan, and I sympathize with you. Just wondering, Steve Rathwell, have we put a speed counter on that traffic counter, sorry, traffic counter on that road? To know the number of vehicles?
It's previously been placed there twice now, and I just completed my third radar test there, which data I've obtained this morning.
Okay, so maybe lots to get that, that would help us decide.
The data will most likely be, next meeting, you guys will see all three days.
And I would just, I would like to mention too, the speed limit is, is currently eighty. As I'm sure everyone's aware, on a, on a road where it's unmarked, the default is eighty. And even if, even if the majority of cars traveling at that speed, that speed is, is, is too much. Specifically for that section of Burchill, perhaps further down Burchill, eighty is, is sufficient. But with two S curves, the cross street and the hill, we find even eighty kilometers to be far too fast for that second road.
Okay, thanks. Did you have any further question, Claus?
No, thank you, Reeve.
Any other questions then? Okay, thanks to Martin. We, we do have a mover here, moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings, that council received the delegation from Morgan Kenny regarding a Burchill Road Speed Reduction Request for information. All in favor? That's Carrie. So thank you, Morgan, for coming and bringing this to us, and we will be discussing it.
Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on then. To the next, to the first report of the municipal officers. And Andrew, that's going to be yours on the manager of planning services interview. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. This is a brief report this evening. It's in regards to planning to do interviews for the management planning. And the recommendation is the council appoint one or two members to the manager of planning hiring committee. We just advertised in the past month for this position based on the decision of council. And the advertisement and the receiving of applications just finished yesterday at four thirty. And so now when we establish a hiring committee, we can proceed to schedule for interviews, hopefully within about a week or so. And have those conducted. So with the addition of one or two staff members, we would be able to put together a hiring committee that also includes three staff members and, and we can proceed with that after this meeting.
Okay, thank you then. I'm going to you first, Karen.
Can you tell us how many applicants we had?
Yeah, we had actually three. And from what I looked at so far, they're quality applicants.
Yeah.
And it is closed now, I think, Kate?
That's correct.
Yes, Claus?
Thanks Reeve, thanks Andrew for the report.
You're cutting out clause?
Could it be two or one, or does council decide that? There, a question to Andrew was, you're saying one or two. Do we as council decide if it should be one or two members or how do we do that?
I think, I think we have decided that in the past.
Right, two. Well, we usually had two members.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
So Karen?
I'd like to put my name forward.
Cause?
I'd like to put my name forward also.
Ian?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that Counselor Jennings and Counselor Carroll be on the hiring committee.
Yeah, I guess we, we haven't heard yet whether whether, well, because we have a mover and you've moved this, then I'm going to ask for a second or first, but then we'll have to go to Counselor Carroll to find out if he's interested or not. Because we have not heard from him. We've only heard from Karen and Claus. So I need a motion, a mover to put this on the, on, oh, sorry, a second or to put this on the, onto the table. Karen?
Sure, I can move it.
Okay, then we, we also going to ask a question?
Nope, because then the next step is to ask Jeff if he's interested, right?
Okay, okay. So Jeff, are you interested?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to stay on the interview process.
Yeah, so then we have a mover and a seconder for this. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor? Then this is carried. That's carried then, thank you. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, just a question, a general question. This is just a general question maybe for you, Andrew. Do you know how other municipalities always handle this? Because this is how we've always handled, we usually just say, you know, we're interested or not, and then we vote. And I just wondered, is that how most municipalities do come up with the interviewing panels? Or do they do it by a draw or like, or, or, or what?
So I haven't done a wide survey of other municipalities, but in my limited experience on, on hiring committees I've been on in the past, we did it with a similar process to how Montague is doing it now.
Yeah. All right, thanks. Okay, then we're going to move on unless you have anything else you want to say there, Andrew?
No, that was everything and that provides me with information. So my next step will be I'll reach out to those two counselors and other staff members. And we'll proceed to look at scheduling interviews, hopefully within the next week.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
Just a quick one, I guess, is just for the fact that if there is a scheduling conflict, does that, because we made this vote and there's a scheduling conflict for myself or for Karen for that matter. Is, how can somebody else, like Claus has indicated that he'd be interested to step in? Is that still okay? And we, I just thought of that after we voted. Is that still possible if, if there's a problem that, that comes up with scheduling at all?
If you, would, if you wanted to put a motion on the floor, Jeff, you could. If we get a second or add to appoint Claus as an alternate.
I, I think I happily do that, just, just, just to, sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I think that would be, would be good to have it in place, but I'll hear from you first, Karen, please.
Just say that the only day I'm not available for Andrew is the fifteenth.
But as, it's, it's probably good to have a backup. It's, it's good to have a backup because you never know what may or may not happen. So anyways, that's your prerogative, Jeff, or anyone else who wants, wants to make that.
Sorry Reeve, is it okay? Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I'm, I'm giving, because I don't want to, so, so I'm going to, I counsel this. sort of sort of implement a council decision by it's like if I can't make something or if Karen or or if Karen couldn't make something. Uh you know, we we said that those are the only two, so I, you know, I've I'm I'm up for putting up a motion to saying as as clause being the alter alternate. Or if we can amend the motion we just did, uh that's possible either way, uh to have him as an alternate in case there's a scheduling conflict.
I think we can just make a new motion.
Okay, I make that motion then.
Seconded by Ken. Uh that's, I'll go to you first then, Claus, and make sure that's okay?
Yes, really, that's fine with me.
Okay, all in favor? That's carried, thanks. Okay, I think that's it for you then, Andrew. I do have a motion here first uh regarding this. It was moved by Karen Jennings and second by Ian Straight. Uh that uh the manager, that that the council received the following report on the manager of planning services interviewing and that the following be approved, that council appoint one or two members to the manager of planning hiring committee, that being Karen Jennings and Jeffrey Carroll with Claus Vandemir as the um second in the the backup. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We're going to move on to the Montague Recreation Culture Committee uh minutes, uh that's September the twenty eighth and October the twenty sixth. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh the first one is the um report of the committees. I'm sorry, I missed one. The committee of the whole. And I do have a motion here. It was moved by Ian Straight and seconded by Claus Vandemir that the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of November the sixteenth, twenty twenty one be approved as circulated. All in favor? Uh opposed? Okay, this these minutes, the minutes are approved. Um I think this is a good time for me to bring this up. Um this is now, I'll go to business arising from the minutes. And um uh I would wanted to say that uh uh regarding the business arising from these minutes, that being the committee, the whole meeting of November the sixteenth. Um under, let's see now, sorry, under three. Uh three E. Uh we had a resolution on the twenty twenty one hospital donation uh funding. And I want to uh apologize to the public and to council. Uh because uh after we had that uh vote, uh which was defeated, uh I did allow uh a discussion to take place, which uh I was one of uh more, one of a few that took place in in some conversation. And as you know, as chair, I try to not have discussions after a vote. And I did allow that to happen, so I want to make a public apology for that. And hopefully that we uh we try our hardest not to not to allow that to happen. And even though I'm, I I think that we all, we're we're all pretty passionate about all of the different things that come to council, but we're not i- in good judgment supposed to do that, and we did, and I allowed it to happen as chair, so I just wanted to apologize. Um now I'll go to all of council that if there's any business arising from those minutes. Uh seeing none then, we're going to move on. Uh the next report then is the one on the Montague Recreation Culture Committee. And that's the September twenty eighth and the October twenty sixth uh meetings. Anything on that? Any questions, Ian?
Yeah, Reeve, can we just back up one? Would you mind it? Would it be okay with council we backed up one notch on the uh committee of the whole meeting minutes?
Yep, is this business rising from?
Yes, please.
Sure, no problem.
So I guess my question is, since the since the motion for the hospital was defeated, um these these attempted, uh I don't know what you want to call them, um surveys and everything else, are they still allowed to occur then, or is that a violation of the code of conduct?
Um I guess, I I think I think I'll have to go to uh Andrew for that answer, because I think the way that that was left in the minutes when I read it earlier was that uh uh that was consensus to maybe for Andrew to come back with a report of how we were going to do that. I think that's what how we left that. But I'm not sure, Ian, whether that's uh like a conflict or whether that's whether that would be contravening the code. I I I would I would hope that we would look into all of that first. But I'm going to go to you, Andrew, if you have any clarification on this.
Um I would recommend um just for ease of transparency, maybe that uh instead of that being considered consensus from council after the defeated motion, that perhaps it would be better to uh to bring it back um as a new report and then council could decide from that report if they wish to give consensus to look at options for surveying uh for a hospital donation.
Okay, and
And it would be a new business.
So would would we be um would we be allowed to do that? I guess it's kind of going along with your question, Ian, also. Would we be allowed to even do that uh without someone having new information? Because uh you know, I guess we're 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 supposed to wait for a year to uh have a discussion on the same topic unless there's new information. I'll go to you, Karen, please.
Yeah, because um I was reaching out to a couple of the counterparts in the clerking department, since that's not my expertise. And that was the information that I was finding was that reconsideration of a motion can be brought forward if there's new information. So I don't know whether survey constitutes new information. So perhaps the clerks are the ones that Ian or that Andrew can reach out to, sorry, to find out whether or not survey would qualify as new information, because it definitely is. Um when it's defeated, it must be only reconsidered if there's new information.
Okay, so Ian, because you asked the question, um is that fair? Then we can just defer this uh defer the answer until Andrew comes back after he talks to some of the clerks?
Yeah, I definitely like clarification on it myself, that's for sure. It almost seems like a workaround because we weren't satisfied with the uh with the uh vote. So I'd like definitely like clarification on it.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else then? Okay, so then we're we're moving on then to four B. And um uh is is there any questions on that four B? If not, I have a motion then. It was moved by Claus Vandemir and seconded by Jeff Carroll that the minutes of the Montague Recreation Culture Committee meetings of September the twenty eighth, twenty twenty one and October the twenty sixth, twenty twenty one be approved as circulated. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Uh do we have any business arising from those minutes? Okay, and moving on then, I see none. We have no petitions, bylaws, motions, no motions tonight. Uh there was no correspondence uh moved forward except for the um council assigned tasks. And I have a motion moved by a Jeff Carroll and second by Karen Jennings that the council received the council assigned task item for information. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And um before we go, before we adjourn, I'm going to ask Christie if you have any questions from the public.
Just give me one second, let me have a look. I have no questions from the public.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry. I just received one.
Okay.
Um I don't think it's actually a question.
Okay.
I I don't know if it's actually a question for everybody.
Okay, uh I guess if you wanted to, you could run it by Andrew there and then we can bring it up again then, if so.
Uh give me just just give me one second.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's more of a statement rather than a question, so.
The council's aware?
If you would like it, I I will, I can say it, I just, okay, um it's regarding the hospital discussion and it says, why will council not follow the rules of conduct?
We certainly, we 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 certainly all try, that's for sure.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. All right, uh when we do have a motion here, it was moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Ian Straight, the bylaw thirty eight, seventy four, twenty twenty one, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held on December the seventh, twenty twenty one. We read it first, second and third time and passed, signed and sealed this seventh day of December, twenty twenty one. All in favor? Yeah. Okay, that's carried, thank you. Moved by Ian Straight, uh seconded by Claus Vandemir, that this meeting do now adjourn at seven oh four PM until the call of the Reeves subject to need. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. We'll take a a couple of minutes to change over to our next meeting, uh the committee of the whole, so maybe two minutes. Thanks.
Hi, Bill.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Oh, I guess so, did you?
We're still live on YouTube.
Yeah, but did you mute me there a minute ago?
I did mute you.
Okay.
Just on when we're on break.
Yeah, no problem. Are you with us, Ian, yet? Okay. Okay, so uh welcome, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our committee, the whole meeting. Uh that's um the uh it's also livestreamed uh electronically. This is the December the seventh, committee of the whole. So now this meeting is open and um I have do have a motion. It was moved by Ian Straight, seconded by Claus Vandemir, that the committee of the whole agenda dated September, de- December the seventh, twenty twenty one be approved. All in favor? And that's carried. Again, uh if council has any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. We have no delegations tonight and we're going to go straight into the first report of the municipal officers. And uh you have both of them tonight, Steve. The first one is uh on the primary road improvements, so over to you. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you, Reeve. Uh yeah, so the report I provided tonight for committee of the whole is uh kind of a breakdown of Thank you, Reeve, uh, yeah, so the report I provided tonight for committee of the whole is, uh, kind of a breakdown of projected or, uh, scheduled, uh, projects that would have to be completed on Pioneer Road. Um, staff reviewed the two thousand and eleven letter, um, and reviewed all associated surveys along with this. And I'd kind of broken down the areas that were listed in two thousand and eleven and, uh, what staff's knowledge as well, just kind of reviewing the areas. Um, without going into a whole bunch of detail, it's all laid out kind of in the report, um, instead of me kind of verbalizing through it again, it's kind of, uh, more or less there for information and, uh, if there's any other questions from council, I'm, uh, here to answer.
Any, any questions, council? Yes, Ian?
Yeah, Stephen, thank you very much again for the report, you're doing a great job with all this stuff, this is a, uh, great opportunity and I think a, uh, a way that the township can move forward to do some improvements on, on Pioneer Road, uh, that aren't going to cost us, uh, you know, three or four million dollars like we've been told in the past, uh, um, you know, as an expense, so I think this is a great way to, to really take, uh, you know, a good, really good foot forward and, and get some stuff done out there and, uh, make some improvements to the road, make things safer for our residents and, uh, you know, make everybody that's on there paying taxes a little bit happier at the end of the day and, uh, thank you very much and keep up the great work.
Jeff?
Thanks, Reeve, uh, yeah, I mean, to echo what, uh, obviously Council Straight said, Steve, uh, this is, this is kind of what we're looking at, but can you just, uh, just kind of break down this one part, part to me, just to make sure I understand, the softening of the blow of that, that huge corner, the big bad corner and like, and I guess just maybe, maybe breaking it down, uh, on, on how that's, is going to soften the blow to, to completely realigning it? Like, if I explain that correctly? Maybe not.
I, I, not fully understanding the question, um, basically, we'd be going through and using the road allowance to try and increase the corner radius, which kind of extends the corner to make it more of a gradual instead of the hard ninety right now, my, my attached drawing doesn't kind of do it justice as to what happens, it's more or less just kind of to visualize, um, but it would be an engineered corner to make sure, you know, with the speed, the posted speed limit for that road hasn't adequate corner, whereas right now it is way outside of the, uh, design speed.
Uh, Claus?
Uh, thanks, Reeve, yeah, great job, Stephen, uh, I like the way you do your reports, they're very easy to understand. So just the topographical one, looking at here right now with the yellow line to soften that corner. Are you able to use as the road allowance to be able to do that or do we have to obtain some properties?
It, it's going to be into the engineering to kind of see what that radius is, hopefully, we, we are kind of getting in there, we don't have to go into too much negotiation for property or anything like that, um. I believe we do have adequate space that we can definitely, uh, increase the safety there without having to obtain any land. But, of course, looking at the image, of course, the, uh, the more land you have, the easier it is to increase the safety, so it's kind of, it does go both ways.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's, thanks, Stephen, and seeing no other questions, uh, do have a motion here, was moved by Claus Vandemere and seconded by Jeff Carroll, that the committee of the whole received the, uh, Pioneer Road improvements report and that the following be recommended to council, that committee of the whole receive Pioneer Road planned improvements for information. All in favor? That's carried. And back to you for the next one, also, uh, Stephen, that's on the code road improvements.
Yeah, thank you, Reeve, uh, so this report here again is, uh, just for information for council to, uh, see the cost to upgrade the gravel section of Code Drive. Um, as it's currently, we, we've already completed cover replacements, um, some spot ditching improvements. And, um, and then it would be due to receive gravel in the upcoming years. Um, so staff has kind of detailed in the report what would be completed with this, um, the money that would be placed for this road. And kind of taken into account the cost of placing gravel on that road versus what it would be for, um, a fifteen-year lifespan of the, uh, updated devil surface treatment with a fog seal on top. Although they report it kind of breaks out the initial cost from the maintenance cost, um, it's all included there and, uh, just to kind of give council an idea of long-term costs that, uh, this, this could, uh, create. That is, uh, if there's any questions on the report for, provided, um, I'm here to answer questions again.
And again, again, in this report, uh, Stephen, um, it, it, it's really great to see, uh, see the different comparisons also, so I, I really think that's a, it's a good way to, to do the report and it, and it sure helps us a lot, so, uh, that's just another, uh, comment I'd like to make, uh, to, um, I'll go to you, Ian, please.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Stephen, again, uh, I'd like to compliment you yourself and your team for, I went to the tour down the road and you guys have definitely done a lot of work. Um, making things a lot better and everything, what, you know, so, uh, compliments to yourself and, uh, your team of guys out there that are getting the stuff done. Um, I have a question, I guess, as far as the, uh, four hundred and thirty, the vehicle count data. Um, how, what kind of spam was that over, is that like a daily vehicle count or is that, was that over two or three days, what, what does that look like, I guess?
So I, I usually try and keep the radar up for about a seven-day cycle, uh, that way we get the day, uh, Monday through Friday and then the weekend count as well. Uh, and then I take the data and calculate an average over those seven days. Um, so this was taken right, great, uh, near the intersection of New Orleans and Code. Um, so I'm going to continue to collect data once we get a few of our other roads updated, but, uh, that's, uh, that's a data for seven days, the average.
Now, uh, follow-up, if that's okay, Reeve?
Yeah.
Um, Stephen, in your opinion, is that a hot, is that high for our, for our roads or? I, I think there's a lot of people that come down the Pioneer to go into town, uh, or in the, in the Snow Falls, kind of use that as a cut-through. Um, and I know we've had a fair number of complaints in regards about dust and, uh, traffic volumes on that road, I'm just wondering, is that, is that high for us or is that a, an average?
Of the roads I've calculated so far, i- it's one of the, actually one of the higher, um, counts comparable is, uh, McLaughlin Road, uh, the part that's being redone right now, it's very similar in, uh, traffic count, actually.
So if there's, if there's consensus from, from council, I would like to, um, have the upgrade just put in the budget to see what that looks like, um, for this year, if that, if there's consensus to do that from council, Reeve?
Yeah, I think we can do that easily, um. So you're, 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 uh, you, I'll go to you first, Ian, and you're a yay. Okay, right? Yes, Ian?
Yes, yes, I am, sorry.
Okay, okay, uh, Jeff?
Now, a little bit of further discussion before we went into this, is that, is that, uh?
We could, yeah. We'll, we'll, yeah, we could, we'll finish the discussion, then we'll go back to your, uh, request there, Ian, and see if we have consensus or not. I think what you're asking is just to, uh, to bring this forward, just to the, the, the figures so that we can make a comparison this year, rather than waiting, right?
Yeah, that's it, that just, just added to see what it looks like to the total and what it may have, that's all.
Okay, so we'll come back, we'll, we'll come back to that in a few, in a minute, so Jeff, I'll go to you first.
Thanks, Derek, because I have a few questions that, uh, along that line, because we have ninety thousand dollars that we are budgeting right now for Code Road, is that just to, to do something about the surface part of the road? Or is that ninety thousand dollars, because we were, you were saying we're going to discuss that sort of in the next meeting, or is that ninety thousand dollars? Was already preliminary for the gravel portion of the road?
Well, then, the ninety thousand is for the existing hard surface on Code, uh, it's more of a maintenance single surface with the fog. Um, so that's just for the first two point six and then this would be separate, the gravel section.
So, I've got another follow-up there, so, right now, it's a, it's a, that road is a paved, like, is a paved road, right? It's not as, or is it, or is it one of the surface treated roads?
It's a service treated.
It is a surface treated road, so we're just putting, we're going to put another surface treat on there. So, like, with their, like, these are preliminary numbers too as well, where if we were to do the surface, we, we try to pair it up to try to fix that road and then do, or does that have to be done in like sort of separates, uh, separate times?
It, as long as we had, uh, the same contractor for both, obviously, uh, it would be ideal to get it done, you, you financially probably would get your best bang for your buck doing both at the same time.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, Stephen.
Okay, um, just a question also, uh, Stephen, I, 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 it, I'm, it may have been in one of the reports and I missed it, but I know the code, one of the problems with Code Drive, and it's always been the same, is that, um, it, it doesn't have a very much of a shoulder. And, um, I guess, I just wondered, have we looked into the cost of extending the, the edge like we did on Matheson? I, I only bring it up wondering, and I realize there's more expense, but I'm, I'm wondering that if we were to look at that or if we have looked at that, the only question, the only reason I'm asking it is basically for safety reasons. And the reason I ask, as I say, it's, it seems like there's a very small shoulder on probably both sides of Code. And, uh, especially on the paved part of it. And, um, and there doesn't seem to be much room to make it any wider because the ditch is right there, so that's just a question to you.
Uh, if there is adequate space to, for a rural road upgrade here, um, you know, your two point seven five lane would be, uh, your kind of minimum for that. And half meter rounding, um, when you get into widening, as, as you guys would have seen with, um, math, and it, it does increase the costs quite drastically, um, you're talking forty to fifty dollars a meter, um, expense on, on, uh, on widening a roadway, so once you get into, you know, a couple, a couple kilometers of, of doing this on each shoulder, that, that price increases very quickly. Um, but if council wishes to see some widening costs, I could definitely bring that forward.
Okay, um, well, I don't see any other questions right now, so I'm going to go back to your question, Ian, and basically you're wanting to, um, uh, we, we'll see if we have consensus for, uh, Steve to come back, uh, with us, maybe a comparative, uh, report on what it would do, what it would cost to, uh, to finish the road as it is, is that your question?
Yeah, I'd like to just like to see what the cost is and have it added to the budget just for, just so we see what the numbers look like at the end of the day and have a conversation surrounding it possibly.
So, um, I, uh, I, I'm wondering if it would be okay, uh, if we, uh, asked, when we asked for consensus, if we could ask also, uh, just if you could bring back that, uh, cost, what it would be to do the, uh, extend the edges, uh, just as a separate thing, if that cost could be brought to us as a, a separate issue also. So I'm going to go around, and Jeff, is that Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to, I, I, I'm trying to understand your question, Reeve, because you're saying about extending the, uh, like, it's hard to just, to do that as part of that budgetary, that would be like part of the reconstruction of the whole road, would it not be if, 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 if we were going to do that, about?
Well, I, no, I, I didn't.
From the government, sorry?
Yeah, I know, I, sorry, I may not have explained it properly, uh, no, I, I was not asking for any reconstruction. Um, because like Code is fairly, you know, it's fairly straight, I'm just saying that there's very little shoulder. And I just wondered if we should be looking at having a paved shoulder there. Um, I don't, I would not be maybe in favor of it if it was going to mean a reconstruction of the road, but personally, I didn't think it would mean any reconstruction of the road. Um, but that, that question would be for Steve, so maybe we can ask, Steve, can we ask you that question maybe and get an answer there or what?
Yeah, so quick numbers is, they're kind of for extending half a meter on each side of the roadway for two point five kilometers, you're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars extra on that cost.
Okay, so, but in your estimation, be, will you, would you be thinking that we would need, uh, like, major reconstruction there or not?
Uh, if you're just doing a widening, you wouldn't need major reconstruction, it's, uh, it is a high prices, uh, this kind of went through, but it's, uh, it wouldn't be full-on reconstructive, everything would just be kind of, uh, widening out the roadway, uh, and then you're into additional ditching operations as you're, uh, encroaching on your ditch line.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I only brought it up mainly for safety, but also that, um, the, but also the fact that when you do, uh, pave the shoulder, uh, they say that after approximately twenty years, you extend the life of the road by uh, maybe close to two years, but I, I only bring it up, uh, um, to, to, to maybe get a costing on that, so Jeff, back to you, is that, uh, any more clear?
It, it is clear, like, to me, like, I mean, Code Road has always been, it was, I mean, listen, during your roads, need study, I, I, I was advocate about making sure it was on our priority roads to, to, to do it. To me, it's, though, that, getting into that discussion is basically what we did at Matheson, we need to, we need to look at what we're going to do with that road and how that upgrade's going to look and then proceed with making sure that we're getting the funding uh, to support that fixing of that road, and I think that's the idea of it being in the priority roads too as well. Is that, you know, I, I'm for, obviously, doing the upgrades, but I think the avenue is better suited to go towards what we did for Matheson because of, and we can, and we can really strip along with safety concerns with how many houses are on that road, everything else we go through with that, and I like Stephen's idea of, uh, in the, in the proposed budget of, of doing that slurry again to get us another five years so we can work towards a, a proper, uh, reconstruction, a proper fixing of that road, so then it'll be done right. Uh, then, for the next thirty years after that, I think if we do that patch filling right now, we're not getting the best bang for the buck we could get for the ending of, uh, of, of making that road what it could be, uh, in that next phase after this, this slurry is only going to get us that, that short period of time as we work towards the, the right picture for Code Road, that's just my sort of perspective behind it, so.
Okay, so, uh, I, you've given me the answer there, Stephen, so I'll just, I'll, I'll, um, I'll withdraw that request, you've already answered it. So thank you for that, and, uh, we're just going to go around the table and get consensus for Ian's request there, so Ian, I know that you're a yes. And a Jeff, I think you said yes. Uh, I'll go to you, Karen?
Yes.
And Claus?
Yes.
And myself, so yes, thanks, uh, for bringing that up, Ian, and we'll wait for your answer, uh, Stephen, on that. So, no further questions on this then, I do have a motion. It was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings, that the committee of the whole received the following report, that being the role, the Code Road improvements. And that the following be recommended to council. That committee of the whole receive Code Drive gravel section upgrade report for information. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. We have no further reports, committees, petitions, motions, notice of motions, excuse me, and no unfinished business. And before we adjourn, Chris, do you have any questions?
Let me just check. Nope, I have no questions.
Okay, thanks, so I do have a motion, um, moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Ian Straight, that the committee of the whole meeting do now adjourn, uh, to seven thirty. PM, all in favor? And that's carried. So that brings us to the end of the meeting, and, um, do we have, uh, do we have any other meetings between now and Christmas?
Twenty-first?
The twenty-first, that's the next one, right? So we won't have to, uh, wish each other, uh, Merry Christmas until then. Anyways, thanks, everybody, and I think.